Come on, Thomas.
We got it squirreled away downstairs.
Testing, testing, testing. I will not lag you at home. Testing, 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 testing.
Kind of weird staring at each other.
Testing.
It's, I can see in here, everyone, well.
Okay, cool. You can go ahead and.
Yeah.
Wait, hold on. Say that again, Thomas. Okay. Five seconds is fine. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Steve, you can go off video now and then just come on before you write them.
Okay.
Steve, you can go off video now and then just come on before you write them.
Okay.
Hey, would you wave and retrieve or something? I just.
Testing, testing, testing. I will not lag you at home. Testing, testing, testing. Testing. Kind of weird staring at each other. Testing.
It's, I can see in here, everyone, well.
Okay, cool. You can go ahead and.
Yeah.
Wait, hold on. Say that again, Thomas. Okay. Five seconds is fine. Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Okay. 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 We should be the only staff person.
Steve, you can go off video now and then just come on before you write them.
Okay. Hey, would you wave and retrieve or something? I just.
The Raffi screen just appeared.
Just waving, mapping.
Why is it so delayed? Test.
The Raffi screen just appeared. Just waving, mapping.
Why is it so delayed? How long, we need to figure out how long the strip, how long the cut is. Is there sound going to YouTube right now? I need you to cut the sound to YouTube. Cut the, cut the audio to YouTube. And then I'm going to have Raffi do another wave test. I want you to check what the latency is. If it's under 15 second latency, that's acceptable. We'll go ahead and move forward and just make sure. Right.
All right, we can go ahead and get started.
I'm muted, man.
All right, welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. This meeting is called to order. So what I'll do is ask staff if we can take a roll call of the commissioners.
Sure. Commissioner Davidson.
Here.
Commissioner Lockren.
Here.
Commissioner Lubomirski.
Here.
Commissioner Samutzi.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
And Vice Chair Mercado.
There. Okey doke. We are going to move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda by any of the commissioners? Hearing virtually none. Next, we'll move on to the meeting procedures. So kind of speak the elephant in the room here, do the COVID-19 shelter in place order. We've established a new way of conducting our public meetings. This meeting is being streamed live to YouTube where people can chat and comment. And we can also have the option for community members to attend via conference call at the following phone number. And the meeting ID is 561-977-371. And I will invite staff to address and clarify how the public can comment at our meeting this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mercado, good evening commissioners. So if you are attending this meeting by conference call, which should provide a public comment, please let us know you'd like to speak by pressing star nine on your telephone. If you press star nine, you'll receive notification that you've been unmuted when it's your turn to speak. If you're attending this meeting via YouTube, please submit your comments in the live chat feature. And let us know that you want your comments read by writing PUBLIC COMMENT in all caps first. Prior to your message and introduce yourself by name and then write out your comment. If you previously submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter that has been forwarded to the Planning Commission and published to our website and it's in the record. At this point, I'm not seeing any comments in the chat room. And there are, are there any phone comments? Okay, no phone comments. I do see there is somebody who is in the chat room. So if you'd like to make your comment, please type it out. Donnie Uzarsky. See that you've noted, you've notified us you want to make a public comment, but I'm not seeing the comment during the public comment period for items not on the agenda. Okay. So we will, at this point, we don't have any comments. So we will move on and you can go ahead and move on to the agenda, Vice Chair.
Great. Thank you, Raffi. Okay. Let me describe the meeting procedures. So we're going to begin with the staff report. Then we'll hear with the applicant, asking the applicant respect to keep their time within 10 minutes. Members of the public will then be invited to speak through the channels we've previously identified. We'll read any comments that are made on the YouTube live chat. And people on the conference call can speak when they are called. And again, try to keep your minutes between two, up to two to three minutes. A commission will then have the opportunity to ask questions to staff, the applicant, or the public after each segment. And then we will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and resolution. So that's kind of the overall plan of what we're hoping to do tonight. And I think earlier folks said if you bounce off as the commissioners, your router goes out or whatever. I believe you can just call back in through the appointment we have and hopefully we will be able to work. So the next thing is any, is there anyone with an urgent communication not on a topic on this agenda? That is seeking to address the commission at this time? Raffi, I think we looked into that.
Correct.
Okey doke. So next, we're going to move on to the consent calendar, which has one item, which is the minutes from the February 25th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments or input from anyone on the minutes from the February 25th, 2020 commission meeting?
So once again, if anybody on the phone would like to provide any comments on the consent calendar agenda item, which is just the minutes from February 25th, press star nine now. And if there's anybody on YouTube that would like to comment on the consent calendar, you can write PUBLIC COMMENT and provide any comments on the February 25th meeting minute. I am not seeing any comments on the February 25th meeting minutes in YouTube, nor are there any phone calls. So.
Okay, great.
I move that we approve the February 5th, 2020 minutes.
Second.
All right, we have them. So we've got a motion and a second. It looks like we can, I'll ask staff to take a roll call on that.
Commissioner Davidson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lockren.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lubomirski.
Aye.
Commissioner Samutzi. Commissioner Samutzi.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Chair Mercado.
Yes. Okay, great. So we're going to now move into the public hearing. And this is item one. 104 Shaver Street. This is a request for a use permit, an environmental and design review permit, and a variance to allow the construction of a new seven unit multifamily residential apartment building with associated site improvements on a 6,264 square foot site. The proposed variance would reduce the front on Shaver Street setback from 20 feet to 15 and the interior side setback from five feet to zero. The project also requests a parking modification to reduce the required onsite parking from eight to seven parking spaces and to increase compact parking from two to four spaces. The project further requests two concessions under the state density bonus law to increase the maximum allowable lot coverage from 60, 60% to 65% and to decrease the required street side setback from 10 feet to eight feet. So I'm going to now turn it over to staff if they can provide a, a presentation, please.
I'm unable to hear Steve.
Go ahead, Steve. You're off mute now.
Okay, hold on. Let me go back where I was. Planning Commissioners, can you see my PowerPoint presentation?
No.
Very well. Sorry. So it's. It wasn't. No, uh. There it is. Thank you. Once again, good evening, Vice Chair Mercado and Planning Commissioners. Once again, can you see my PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you. So tonight, we have a project proposing a new seven unit multifamily apartment building located in the downtown. One of those units is supposed to be an affordable unit at the very low household income whole household level. One of the units is proposed to be an ADA accessible unit. Project also includes one density bonus. And because of providing a density bonus, they're, they're allocated up to three BMR units. But they are asking for one density bonus unit. In addition to by meeting their affordability, they're eligible for up to three concessions. This project is asking for two. Two that are automatic. One would be the reduction of the street side setback from 10 feet to eight feet. Second one would be increasing the maximum lock coverage from 60%, maximum of 60% to 65%. In addition, this project is also requesting a use permit that will allow them to obtain parking modifications. They're requesting two part of parking modifications. One would be the reduction in the required parking from eight parking spaces per our code to seven parking spaces, essentially eliminating the guest parking space that's required. The second of the parking modifications requested is to increase the maximum percentage of compact spaces from 30%, which would equate to two parking spaces, to 50%, which would equate to four parking spaces. Last but not least, the project is also requesting two variances. One would be the reduction of the garage setback from 20 feet to 15, 15 feet. And also reduction of the required interior side setback from five feet to zero. This was, this last one, the interior side setback was at the request of the Design Review Board. They thought that the site was so difficult that, and the interior side setback bumps up against the, the AT&amp;T office located immediately north of it. The project site is challenging in both site configuration and also location. It is a triangular shaped parcel. It is a transitional parcel as well. It happens to be located within principally a commercial district with commercial development both north, south, and east. And then residential to the west principally duplex residential with some multifamily, more dense multifamily residential to the southwest. It is also located on a busy arterial, which is the Third Street arterial. The Design Review Board has reviewed this project three times on three separate occasions. February of last year, they reviewed a conceptual review. In December, they, they reviewed the formal project submittal. And then the following February of this year, they continued their formal review. And on that last meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval of the site and building design as revised and as presented to the board tonight. Excuse me, to the commission tonight. Staff has received public comments. We've received three. Each one before each of the meetings or the hearings. These, these comments include that the project design doesn't fit the, the residential character that, that the. that, that the commenter believed was a predominant design in the neighborhood. That the project should be compliant with their onsite parking. They should provide eight parking spaces, meaning they should provide that guest parking space. And also, that the existing structure has some historic value, should be preserved. Staff has, has reviewed these comments. We've replied to these as well. I wanted to briefly mention those. Uh, as far as the design, the fit for the character, the board did review this, and they did determine that design adequately related to the predominant non-residential character of the neighborhood, not the residential character of the neighborhood. Both the Public Works Department and the Community Development Director, they support the parking reduction on two background, two bases. One is that the project is providing excess bicycle parking. There's a provision in the, in the bike code, and excuse me, in the, the parking code that allows for a reduction in onsite parking in the downtown if offset by excess bicycle parking. And in this case, the project is required to provide two bicycle parking spaces, and they are providing six secured garage parking spaces. In addition to, the Public Works Department has reviewed the overall availability of public parking in the vicinity and found it to be ample. Perhaps not immediately in front of the building, in front of the location, but ample within a block or two radius. Last comment from, from staff regarding the public comments were that this site is, has not been located on any of the San Rafael survey inventory lists, identified easier, either as a local state or national landmark or eligible to be listed or needing further evaluation. Staff believes this is a transitional site located on a busy arterial, difficult to sustain the existing single-family residential structure that's on there currently. It's surrounded by mostly commercial or non-residential uses. The project proposed to provide seven downtown rental units and include both an affordable unit and an ADA accessible unit, which will, which will beef up the city's housing inventory. The project revisions included improvements to the garage maneuverability, site landscaping, unit storage, bicycles parking, and also providing a greater sense of entry. Both the community development and the public works directors have reviewed the requested parking modifications and support these. The Design Review Board also recommends approval of the site and the building design as presented to the commission this evening. Staff finds that the project generally complies with the applicable general plan policies, the development standards for the high-density multifamily residential zoning district, the review criteria for environmental design review permits, the San Rafael design guidelines, the good design principles, and the findings necessary to approve both the requested environmental design review permit, the use permit, and variances. That concludes staff's introduction of the project.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, uh, before we open it for the applicant, does anyone on the commission have a question for staff? So, just so the commissioners know, I'll, I'll likely be taking roll call later as we provide official input and our comment. For now, I just thought I would allow that. Seeing that I don't hear anybody jumping in with questions, I'll ask if the applicant is available and can provide any additional presentation?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, commission members. I really appreciate having the time to, uh, to let you review the project tonight, especially given the circumstances this month. My name is Mike Larkin. I'm the architect of the 104 Shaver project. What I'd like to do is just take maybe three minutes and run through the basic drawings and provide a little bit of explanation. And, um, I'll keep my description short. So, bear with me one second. Can you see the, um, the graphic? The site?
Yes.
Okay, great. You know, what first impressed me very much about the site was the, um, the mixed character of it. And as was mentioned in the summary, each, each side of the, um, site has a kind of a distinct character. On the west, the, um, the older, uh, older homes and apartments, the one residential part. Uh, to the north, you know, the large industrial building, the AT&amp;T building, which has quite a large parking lot, which is normally, uh, normally empty. The east side, there's commercial use. And then, uh, the south side, we, we're, um, we oriented our project to take advantage of, um, you know, a very good sun exposure to the south. So, um, the south is quite, is drawn out. There's the busy thoroughfare of Third Street and, um, commercial uses there. So, we really viewed the, um, the block as, or the, the site as a, um, a border site, uh, a border between the old residential area and the, um, commercial areas, also between neighborhood streets and, uh, thoroughfare. We've worked with, uh, city staff and the Design Review Board for about 18 months. And, um, the solution came somewhat gradually. It wasn't, it wasn't real quick. We went through a couple of different, the different, uh, different iterations, uh, but we're quite happy with, um, with the final result after taking, um, input from Department of Public Works. Uh, for example, we first had our, our car access actually from Third Street. And that was, um, they, um, very quickly talked us out of doing that due to traffic safety issues. So, the vehicular access moved to, to Shaver Street. So, there's one, basically one curb cut, which is both in and out, uh, to the garage. But the proposal is seven units, uh, one of which is a below-market rate unit. Seven protected parking spaces, six protected bike parking spaces. The, uh, at the parking level, it is at grade level. So, there's no significant excavation needed. There's no basement construction, for example. But overall, the design intent was to break down the scale of the building to, um, just be more interesting and, and complement the, uh, the unique configuration of the, of the site. There are no lobbies or no interior corridors in the building. The, the circulation is all on the outside. So, as one, as a resident comes to the, to the site, um, you have a choice of going up one of two exterior stairs. That takes you to a, um, to a roof deck or a roof terrace. And then, from there, uh, the resident goes directly to their unit. We believe we have a very simple and attractive, uh, material palette. And I'll, let's, you know, go back to the graphic. We're just working with, um, natural wood siding, which is an ash siding, a smooth stucco. We have stucco in two colors. The railings, guardrails are glass just for a, uh, for a simple, you know, non-cluttered look. Uh, we're using what's called green screen, which is a product to grow, um, grow vines up the wall. So, we use that in a couple of locations at the ground level. Also, our landscape architect, Mike Cook, I think, did a very good job at, um, working out a planning scheme that, that complemented the architecture. And I'll, uh, briefly go to that. This is our, um, our site survey. The site is virtually, uh, dead level. I think it only varies by one, one foot across the whole site. Presently, there's a curb cut on Third Street. We'd be taking that out and, um, having the curb cut on Shaver Street. A landscape plan. There's, um, you know, abundant planting. We see planting along, um, the east and the, uh, the south sides. You see there are four maple trees along Third Street and, uh, two crape myrtle trees on, uh, Shaver Street. There's a bioretention area along Shaver Street. So, there's, um, stormwater that's collected in that planting area, um, on the Shaver Street side. Uh, as you come up to the second level, this is a roof terrace or roof deck. And there, um, there are planters at that level. You can access three of the apartments from this level. Uh, the third floor is virtually the same, the same layout as far as the units go. We have a total of four different, um, plan types for the units. Quick view, just a quick view of the floor plan at ground level, showing the parking garage, the, uh, the accessible unit at the ground level. Excuse me, this is taking a little bit to slide, a typical floor plan. Here, we're seeing the, the, the back of the building, which is really the same material palette as the front. Uh, this is the front view or the, uh, the south view. Giving you an idea of the composition. And the, uh, down below is the east view. I'll, I'll reserve my time for what questions that you might have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, before we open it up to a public comment, I'll quickly ask if any of the commissioners have any quick questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions.
Go ahead.
I, I noticed in the slanted roofs, um, they are, these are angled towards the south. Do you intend to place solar panels on those?
Exactly. That was part of the, um, the reasoning. Uh, one, one of our ideas was, um, we liked how, how the, uh, the roof form expressed, the individual units more than just a uniform roof wood. But it has the advantage of being basically the, the right angle for solar panels. So, so it could easily, easily be used in that, that form. And the new build, the new building code actually requires that a portion of the, um, building be powered by solar panels.
So, from, from how you described that, is, is that, does that mean that, um, there's not been a solid decision to, to do so merely that we have created the opportunity to install those?
We, uh, we actually show panels, like, it, it might be hard to see on that drawing, but they're actually shown, um, on the elevation drawings. And, um, but that was the intention, that, uh, that panels be there.
Okay. And that's, and this is for, uh, in terms of net, uh, power generation, this is to donate back to grid? Or is this just as like a failover? Can you kind of talk a little bit about the intended, uh, I guess? I guess, why did revolt that you intend to push?
Um, the, I've, I've done one of these projects for a house before, and the way it worked was it essentially credited back. If it generated a lot of power in, in like an afternoon, the owners would essentially get that credited back to their PG&E bill. So, that's my understanding.
Okay. Those are all the questions I had, thanks.
I, I had two questions, um, one of which is just because this is on a busy arterial, um, I'm curious about what thought and design elements were, or materials were put into place from a noise perspective?
Well, certainly, the, um, the, the windows are really the weak link in, uh, you know, in turn, in terms of keeping sound out. So, they would, um, certainly be high-quality windows. They're, they're insulated and multi-painted windows. It's, um, we, we did set back the wall of the building as much as we could. So, instead of coming out to the, the full envelope of, um, Third Street, we did try to, as part of the design was, was, uh, setting back that, that facade. But we would certainly, it would be careful attention to the, to the window spec and detailing and, um, and, and really the insulation of the walls. That's really what we, how we would look at it.
Okay. So, my other question has to do a little bit more with parking. And, um, one of those is that you've got four of seven spaces are for compact cars. And I'm just wondering how that, on a practical level, how that gets managed? In other words, if owner, I guess, do you, do you just rent to people that own compact cars? I mean, in other words, how does it get managed that actually have the seven cars that get parked there for compacts?
Yeah, that came, that came up as a question in the DRB meeting. I think, well, I think when someone decides to live here, you know, as a resident, they would either, um, essentially have a compact car. Or if they didn't, they, they would, you know, if, if there wasn't room for, for their, let's say they have a truck, they would have, they would obviously have to park, um, outside of the, um, the site. So, they would be stuck looking for, um, street parking. I, I think it would sort of be understood as if you were wanting to live here, there were, there were some, you know, so many slots available. And, um, if you drove a big vehicle, you might have to park on the street. I'm not sure how else that would be really managed.
Okay. One, then one final question about that. And that is just what are your plans with respect to putting electric car chargers into the garage?
It could, it could certainly be done. But I, I don't have a real specific plan for that, but, um, it could be done, you know, pretty easy. So, um, of course, all the electrical service for the whole building will be a brand-new system. So, it would be, you know, relatively easy thing to do. But we haven't, we haven't indicated that on the drawings yet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question regarding parking as well on sheet A6, where you showed it, um, Ingress and Negress maneuvering.
Yes.
It sounds to me from the bottom right scenario that a car would have to, uh, back into the street. Am I reading that correctly?
Let's see.
Uh, A6 is a little different than, than my A6.
Uh huh. Yeah, in general, I was showing, some cars, I was showing them pulling in. But in, in general, the, um, to leave the garage, there would just be a couple of turns. The, the person would have to back up, but, but do a couple of turns to, um,
If you go back to the previous drawing where you had four scenarios in one sheet, eight, eight, 6.1, I think it was on your, on your PowerPoint, that one.
Yeah.
The bottom right, it, it seems to me that, uh, car number four, can car number four be fa, uh, forward-facing when exiting?
It could. It, they would, um, they would need to back straight up and then make a maneuver to, to and then make a maneuver to rotate the car. So we did try to provide as much open space as we could. That was part of the reason for the variances requested. Because both the north wall and the south wall were adjusted as far as we could.
Okay. And my next question is on sheet L2, where you have a detail number nine of a biofiltration sod. I don't know where that goes in the drawing. I didn't see detail nine where you're proposing that.
Yeah, on the landscape drawing, that is at the, along the Shaver Street side, the bioretention area is where you see the big planted area immediately south of the driveway. So there's a range of plants there. And the biosod is called out there, the bioretention space. So just below the entry driveway.
And how are you draining that? Where is that ultimately draining to?
Well, the, I mean, the concept is it allows water as much as possible to be absorbed into the soil. And then the excess water is picked up with drain lines and connected to the entire drainage of the site. So it's only taking care of a percentage of the drainage. It's not as if 100% of the drainage is absorbed there. We have, we have beginning civil drawings, but of course, they have to be developed more for the permit phase, the building permit phase.
Okay, yeah, that was my question. That I can see how you're collecting the whole drainage system within the site, but I don't see it going outside of the site.
Yeah.
That will be done at the building permit phase then?
Exactly, yeah, we'll have our civil engineer more involved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Doesn't sound like I'm hearing any other commissioners, so.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about garbage collection? And what, just very nuts and bolts, what that would look like?
Right, so I'll go to the ground level. So since these are apartments, we have one large trash area designated there near the parking area. We would have a, you know, essentially a staff person or staff worker that would, you know, open up the garage door, get the bins out to the curb side along Shaver. And so I think it would be one person's responsibility just to orderly, you know, get everything out there rather than depend on individual renters to deal with that. I think it would be forgotten if that were the case.
Okay. Second, I'm wondering, I couldn't readily find anything in the materials. I'm wondering if anyone associated with 220 Shaver has commented on the project. 220 Shaver is the property that is, in the near future, looks like they're going to have a zero setback possibly with this property. Have they had any opinion about that specifically or anything else around the project?
Is two, I'm sorry, which one is 220?
This property shares, the northern side of the property shares a property, a boundary line with 220 Shaver.
The AT&amp;T facility?
Yeah, the parking lot there.
The parking lot, uh-huh. We have not had any contact from that owner or no questions, no.
Okay. In addition, also, when you have a project like this near a roadway, and you did say that sound is absolutely a factor in the design and the windows being kind of a weak, potentially weak link, is it normal or common to involve a sound engineer? And was one retained in this one, in this project?
We would, those technical aspects, we would do in the next step. We usually wouldn't. The only consultants we've dealt with so far are landscape and civil. So the people like structural engineer or sound engineer, mechanical engineer, they all come in this next phase. So as yet, no.
Okay. Okay, but it sounds like, I would hate to have that opportunity missed and then there's an expensive fix later on. And then lastly, I'm admittedly a neophyte on bioretention areas. And I'm just, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about what happens to the bioretention area in the event of heavy rains? Is that a relevant question or is that kind of off the wall? I'm not sure. But it seems to me that if you're having an area of basically drainage, kind of going into a certain area, and then you may have a lot of groundwater in that area, that can pose an issue and a problem. And I'm wondering what kind of solutions are there if indeed that's an issue?
I mean, my understanding is that the area absorbs water to a certain capacity. And then, once it's maxed out, you have an overflow system that can capture it and then, you know, release it away from the site. So it has a certain capacity, but once it reaches its limit, there's essentially an overflow. And then it's transmitted away through, you know, through an engineered drainage system.
Okay. And I'm assuming that's basically part of, you know, drainage 101 when it comes to bioretention areas?
Right.
I have a little bit of experience in that issue, if I may. These bioretention areas are designed to treat the 10-year storms because they meet the water quality requirements. But the sizing of the pipes and where the water eventually gets collected, the capacity of those are designed to handle the 100-year storms because these bioretention facilities are not going to absorb anything to have those bigger rains. So for water quality purposes, they're designed to infiltrate the smaller storms. But the capacity is trying to handle the 100-year storms in the assumption that they will not be absorbing any water.
Okay.
All right, I had a question. Is, can I, can you like the Third Street elevation? The street trees being proposed? Those are, are they elm trees? Is that what they're proposed?
They're actually maple on Third Street.
Maple, okay. Is, was, when the DRB looked at those, were they, any chance you could have a slightly more robust, taller tree with a larger canopy? Just to soften the.
Yeah.
A little bit?
I'm going to just go back to the landscape drawing for a second. There we go, one more. I mean, presently, it's called out a 24-inch box.
Right, it looks like if the drawing is of a mature tree from the Third Street elevation, it looks like they're about 15 feet, 12 feet?
Right, yeah, that's, I mean, that's, yeah, that's my architectural drawing, which is probably a little less meaningful than the landscape architect spec. But yeah, I understand what you're saying.
The DRB didn't have any, I didn't see any comments directly on the size of the tree or the.
No, they looked at the planting pretty carefully. And I did not get a comment about tree size, no.
Okay, bigger's better when it comes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's nice, it's especially nice on the south side there because you're getting some, a lot of good shade value.
Right, and it's good they're deciduous. So they're going to give you the summer or the winter light also, so. Okay, thanks.
Chairman Mercado, can I just respond to one of the questions regarding noise? There is a condition of approval, condition of approval number 29 that addresses the concern about noise on the property and requires submittal of an acoustical study prior to building permit issuance. So that has been addressed by staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other commissioners before we open this up for the public? Hearing none, I'll ask staff to help us out and open up this item for public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Mercado. So if you are participating by conference call or wish to speak, please press star nine. And while I wait for any participants to press star nine, I'll also request if anybody wants to comment within the YouTube chat, please make sure to include the words "public comment" in all caps to start your comment. We did receive one comment through YouTube chat, and I will provide it now. So the name was withheld. They live on, I live in the neighborhood and have since 1979. Parking is a very real issue, and I'm concerned about how this project will affect homeowners and residents of the neighborhood. I believe my sister, Dale Wallace, sent a letter by mail stating similar. And this is me paraphrasing. That letter was actually forwarded to the planning commission this afternoon. The comments, she continues on, "The comments about the ample parking is not so. The neighborhood struggles daily except Sunday to allow residents to park near their homes. Often, I must park several blocks away." And that was the only comment we have received. And I see no comments over the phone. So with that, that would conclude public comments at this moment.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so I will now call on the commissioners if we have any questions for staff or anything that was missed. Is there any other questions that we need to address? I will call you out by name if I need to. Okay. Then, why don't we, so everybody can provide a little bit of comment, I will call, I will do a quick row call. I'll call out a commissioner's name if you want to provide your thoughts and input on this project. We can then do that prior to maybe taking a motion or so. So I'll start with Commissioner Davidson, if you have any comments you'd like to make. And you're on mute. Go ahead, there you go.
I don't live too far off from this. And I do as well share the parking situation and the perceived shortage. I am wondering, I understand the benefits of the project. However, the parking is an issue. So I'm just wondering, in discussions with Public Works, I'm guessing that the benefits of this project outweigh the concerns of parking? And therefore, those were, I don't want to say dismissed, but parking is an issue around this area. Third being extremely busy and then all the residential streets on the sides are typically not available. So I'm just wondering, in the thought process from Public Works, was that the issue that just the benefits outweighing the concerns? I guess that was a question and not a comment.
Yeah. That's fine. All right, I will, Commissioner Lockren, your thoughts?
I'm sorry, did you want staff to respond to Commissioner Davidson or do that later?
Why don't we lay out all of our just discussion points now and give staff a chance to make sure they have a response? Maybe there's something in the conditions of approval or somewhere else in the document. So I'm fine if staff wants to jump in, but I thought maybe we would just go through our comments and issues and then see if staff wants to address them.
Okay, all right. So in general, in general, I really like this project. I think it makes a really creative use of an oddly shaped and small parcel of land to add housing, which is something that San Rafael definitely needs, including one very low-income unit and also an ADA unit. So in general, I like the project a lot. I do have some concern about parking based on the feedback that we've gotten. So I would like to hear what staff has to say to Commissioner Davidson's question. At the same time, I also, look, as I can see, is really what the applicant is asking for is to reduce the number of spaces from eight to seven. So really, what the variance are asking for is one parking place. So that's sort of, I sort of weigh that against the issues related to parking. Specifically, I think in terms of other things, I would definitely like to see a requirement that they at least wire for Level 2 car chargers in the parking area. Just as something that can easily be done now, but would be a lot more difficult to do later. And I think those were my comments at this point in time. I don't have any issues with the setback, the reduction in setbacks or the increase in lot coverage. My only hesitation is that parking issue, but also at the same time recognizing that they're going from eight to seven. So in general, I support the project.
Great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Luba Mersky?
I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a tough one again. It seems like we've had a number of transitional, it's not specifically a downtown parcel, but it's not a residential parcel either in its location. So, I mean, it's a great use of an underutilized area right now. I'm okay with all the variances requested. Couple feet here, one parking spot is not going to destroy the area. Personally, I actually was the liaison for the first time for one of these meetings. I'm not a huge fan of the sloped roof multiple times at all. But again, that's not our purview, that's the DRB purview. I would like bigger street trees. But all in all, I think it's a favorable project. It's going to increase our housing inventory. And one's an ADA unit, so that's always nice to have. So yeah, I'm in favor at this point.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Samuzi?
I do have one additional question for the applicant. And this is somewhat related to, I think, Commissioner Davidson's earlier question, just kind of about the mix. And that is, can you elaborate a bit on any of, if at all, the market research you did in terms of the types of tenants that you would expect? Especially just given the car limitations?
I don't know if you can hear me, it looks like I can't.
There we go.
Video.
We can hear you now, Mark, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I wouldn't say I was able to do detailed research of renters. We were trying to keep the footprints on the smaller side to avoid, you know, the cost being too high. So we were keeping the units at 800 square feet or 900 square feet. We were just trying to maximize what we had. But I would, you know, to be honest, I didn't do like detailed research of who the renters would be. We just tried to do things in a common sense manner and not make it too complicated, which would translate to making it, you know, too expensive.
Okay, I appreciate that. So just the thought process there was just to get a better sense of what the potential utilization say of.
Um, so just the, the thought process there was just to, just to get a better sense of what the potential utilization say of public transit versus cars might potentially like. Obviously, we, you know, you can't project out for, for, you know, ten or fifteen years, but, you know, just kind of getting a baseline of, you know, does that match up with, um, you know, who's looking to rent, particularly in that price range, et cetera? Um, but you know, that, that, that might be helpful, it's probably not essential. Um, but just, I guess, in general, in terms of the, the project's overall qualifications, I, I'm definitely in favor of the project. Um, you know, the concern so much about the street parking, again, depending on the, depending on sort of the, the types of renters who are more likely to rent, that may or may not be an issue for that. Uh, but again, that's not necessarily in the, in the control so much of the, of the applicant. Um, so, you know, that's not something I'm necessarily gonna hold against. Um, uh, and parking is more of a universal issue, and I think that's a bigger structural problem. Um, I wouldn't want to delay too much housing, um, until we address that. Obviously, you know, that, this is something that's sort of on the radar of the city anyway. Um, i- yeah, in terms of the, in terms of the, um, yeah, I, I, I don't have any action, any, any particular part of the project, so I, I would be in favor of it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Schaefer?
Uh, I don't wanna spend too much time repeating things that have already been said. I think, um, it, it is an oddly shaped, um, lot. And I see that, you know, you're, we're trying to make the best, uh, best of, of a, an oddly shaped lot, and I think it's been a pretty good job. Uh, is it, is it my favorite design? No, but I, I understand and appreciate what the architect is trying to do, straddling, uh, you know, the area, you know, that, that's in. Um, what I really like is, you know, how, how we have housing, 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 uh, here as, you know, this is a, a, um, a growth of our housing stock, which is excellent. And we dra- you know, drastically need that, so, um, you know, I know that there are some, uh, some issues that I, that aren't ideal, but it, they're outweighed by the fact that this is more housing. Um, I'm not concerned about reducing parking spaces from eight to seven, I know it's gonna be a little tight in there. Uh, but I've seen that, we've, you know, I've seen that come to the planning commission before, and I haven't heard of negative feedback or, um, uh, any regrets from the planning department that, that something like that shouldn't have, have been, uh, done before. And if, if it were a problem in previous projects, it wouldn't have been, uh, recommended, uh, in this one. Um, everybody's howling outside my window right now, it's eight o'clock.
Mine too. Mine too.
Um, I would normally be more hesitant about, uh, cutting a setback to zero. Um, but, uh, you know, the two-twenty shaver doesn't seem to be concerned about it. And on the other side of that property line is, is just a, um, a parking lot. So it, it seems to me to be a fairly benign, um, setback, um, reduction. So as for that variance, and then the, the, uh, garage setback twenty to fifteen feet, it may affect the queue off of shaver. Uh, I'm not convinced that that's a reason to not do it. Um, increased maximum lot coverage, uh, concession, you know, it's, it's not, it's not like it's a, a massive change. Um, you know, all in all, I think it's a, a good project, it's a needed project. And I think that it's, it's fairly well done for the space that, uh, that the architect and the applicant have had to work with. So, um, so I'll recommend adopting the, that draft resolution.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'm not gonna spend much time, I think it's, I think it's a overall good project. And you're lucky AT&T is next door with a big parking lot, otherwise, a zero setback, you're gonna not get anywhere else, so. And appreciate changing the driveway off of Third Street to avoid that. I'm hoping there's no backups, but I think this is an interesting issue as to what kind of tenants are gonna move in there. And if our community is changing to folks who are on bikes and use SmartTrain and public transportation, I think this would be ideal for it in that location. So hopefully, these are, to the extent affordable by the size as to how small they are. And, um, I think, uh, yeah, very creative way to use a complicated, small space. I'm appreciating the parking, I think reducing it by one, as everyone else said, is, uh, likely, hopefully going to work. I think the reduction in some of the compact spaces is really interesting. And that just seems to be like a tenant's gonna need to do their due diligence to not have to park blocks away. So, um, no, and overall, I, I think it's a, it's a good, good project. Um, so another work, a couple of questions that were raised in terms of the parking. I wanna give a chance if staff had a comment or thought or anything it wanted to provide in response to, uh, any of the questions that were raised by any of the commissioners.
Um, I, I'll start and then I'm allowed, uh, Steve, the staff planner, to jump in. But there was quite a bit of, I know that there was quite a bit of discussion that went into this parking. And, um, I think, um, all commissioners and, um, yourself, Vice Chair, um, bring up the fact that this is a, you know, it's a difficult site, it's triangular shape, it's got access on, I mean, every, there's one side that doesn't have access on the street. Um, there were a few different design iter- iterations. Um, and the architect, I think, did a great job each time trying to find a way to do that maneuvering. Um, throwing in the compact spaces was one of the, the, um, suggestions that were made to be able to allow the, all, all of the parking spaces that were proposed. Um, the reduction is one space, it's not an unusual reduction. Um, there is, um, the also the, you know, I mentioned, I think somebody mentioned the fact that this is not so far from transit. We are, we have been working on the downtown wayfinding, um, parking, wayfinding and parking study that is looking at ways to reduce parking already. Um, and, um, ways to do that is providing alternatives such as doing this compact space, um, design. There's also, um, something that came, that was brought up by, um, Commissioner Lockren, and that is that, you know, where there is an opportunity to provide the electric vehicle charging stations, that's another thing that could be added if your commission, um, decided that's, that's the direction you wanted to go, um, to kind of balance out the reduction in the parking. Um, and I, I don't know if Steve, you wanna, um, jump in and add anything that I've already, to what I've already shared?
I'm afraid I can't get in there video, video-wise, but I can, can you hear me at least? Okay. There we go. Um, I can't really add much more than what Ally said, I, I, I would agree with everything that she did. It was, it was more of a, a balancing act, um, for the board. They've believed that the, the excess, the significant excess of, of secured bike parking and the location of the downtown location. Um, but, but more pointedly, they, they did surmise, or they did calculate and found out that there was adequate on-street parking within the proximity of the site, just not directly in front of it. Meaning that the folks, there was adequate street parking one, two, three blocks away. So they, that's another one of the reasons why they supported this, is that, yes, i- i- immediately on Shaver Street, it is impacted. No, no question about it, no arguments. However, that, that is public parking, it's not owned by any of the, the residents down there. Um, but they did find out that the, the elimination of a guest parking, they felt that a guest parker, somebody's gonna come there as a guest, will be compelled to park several blocks away and hoof it in.
Okay, thank you. So I think I'll bring this back to the commission. Um, any last items of discussion or issues we need to address?
No, just one final point to, uh, piggyback on what, uh, Steve Stafford just said. Uh, if I'm not incorrect, the, the way the property is currently being used, that the visitors would need to park on the street. So, uh, if there's a visitor to this, um, you know, to this site later on, it would just be the same. I, I mean, I do understand there, there'll be more people living there presumably, but, um, but it, you know, street parking for this lot isn't, isn't new.
Right. Right. Okay, so I think we have a couple options on the table to, somebody would wanna, uh, take a motion and approve the resolution, uh, as submitted?
Chairman Mercado, I have a question. If, if Commissioner Lockren wanted to include, uh, maybe add on to the, uh, resolution to include an EV component.
Right, right.
May we ask her what that, if she could provide some definition around that?
Um, sure, so I think, um, that were to make a motion, it would be to approve the resolution with the requirement that they, um, wire all of these spaces with, to be prepared to install a level-two charger. In, so that, in other words, a level-two charger requires more electricity, requires two-hundred-and-twenty volts, but it's a much faster charger. So when they build it, obviously being able to do that is far easier than trying to retrofit it. So I guess my recommendation is rather than requiring them to actually put the charger in, requiring them to wire for the charger. But, I mean, another, another, uh, opportunity is there is to, for example, perhaps require them for the four compact spaces to have put in electric chargers. So there's, I think there's some room there, a- a- any, do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I actually think that that's a, a pretty fair proposal, um, cuz I think that doesn't really create a hard requirement, and it allows for the expansion of future essential infrastructure.
And by that, Commissioner Samuzi, do you mean the first idea, which would be to wire all seven spaces?
That is correct.
Okay.
So right now, we have a motion that would, that would be amended to include adding electrical vehicle level-two wiring, if that's the correct term?
Well, let me, let me officially make the motion, so I, I move that we approve the resolution as proposed by staff with the requirement that, um, sorry, with the requirement that the, um, sorry, I've gotten distracted now, with the, um, building, that they install wiring for a level-two charger at each of the seven parking spaces.
Second.
Does staff need, before we take a roll call, does staff need any chance for clarification on the proposed resolution?
No, I think we've got it, unless Steve needs additional verification, I think we have.
Yep, good.
Okay, so we have the motion, do it, and we have a second from Commissioner Davidson, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if we can take, uh, staff can take roll call, please?
Sure, Commissioner Davidson, oh, sorry, Commissioner Lockren?
Aye.
Commissioner Luba Mersky?
You're on mute.
Commissioner Samuzi?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Davidson?
Aye.
Commiss- or Vice Chair Mercado?
Yes. Okay, so that amended resolution passes, and I think.
So, I'd like, uh, Vice Chair, can I, may I read the appeal rights? Um, the appeal, this, uh, this approval is final unless the, um, item is appealed to the city council. There is a five-day appeal period that ends on February twentieth at five P M. Um, so if there's an interest in having an appeal filed, the appeal would go to the city clerk's office. Um, and, uh, via email at city dot clerk two at cityofsanarfel.org or by calling four eight five three zero six six.
Great, thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to item, what do we have here? Item two or three? I think it's item two.
Or an item three, but.
Item three?
Yeah.
This is the election of new chair and vice chair for twenty twenty. So due to, ca- due to the resignation of a commissioner formerly serving as a chair for twenty twenty, a new chair and potentially a new vice chair shall be elected for the remainder of this year's term. And we'll ask for staff report, please.
Okay, I have a very brief report. Um, the planning commission tonight is being asked to select a new chair and vice chair to complete the rest of the year. As you mentioned, um, Commissioner Schofer, who was serving as chair, um, has resigned, and so that's leaving the, uh, chair position vacant. Um, per the rules and procedures, commissioners are not, are shall not serve as chair more than once in the seven consecutive years. Um, right now, the ten, the way it works, it would be, um, who ha- whoever has the most tenure would then be, um, uh, assigned that, or nominated to chair, and the vice chair would be, um, then follow suit in, in this order. So the chair would be based on a rotation criteria, um, being next in line. Um, uh, so the next person in line would be Chairman Mercado. Um, he's, be- because he has been serving as vice chair, um, for the last three months, so he would be the next person that would be in line. Um, in terms of the vice chair, the order is determined by, um, similar rules in that the vice chair would be normally whoever has not served in the past seven years, but who is the most, um, who has the most, um, tenure in the next, so that person is, uh, Commissioner Samuzi. So Commissioner Samuzi would be the next in line to, um, or eligible to serve as chair for the twenty twenty year. Um, in accordance with the rules and procedures that I just mentioned, it is recommended that Commissioner Mercado be elected to serve as chair and Commissioner Samuzi be selected to serve as vice chair. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Do we have a, do you wanna discuss this at all before we go to public comment?
Um, I would just ask, uh, Vice Chair Mercado and Commissioner Samuzi if you are interested in really, in, in taking this on.
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to guess for myself.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not really how I anticipated.
Right.
Getting thrown into it, so, but as I sit in my garage with all the glamour of it, sure, why not?
Uh, so hey, can I, can I make a motion that we, um, we install, uh, Vice Chair Mercado as chair and make the Vice Chair, uh, Commissioner Samuzi?
Well, I think we need to allow for public comment.
Uh, do we have an action item? Or, good.
At least allow staff to, uh, open, and we can open and close public comment formally.
Yeah, thank you Vice Chair Mercado, uh, so again, uh, the, anyone's on the conference call, which there's nobody on right now, you press star nine. Uh, if you'd like to speak, and if anybody would like to make a comment in the YouTube live chat, you can type public comment in all caps and then provide your comment. And at this point, I do not see any phone calls nor any chat comments. So I think that would, uh, conclude that for you.
Okey-dokey, thank you. So we'll bring it back, I think we had a, if we want to discuss, we can, or feel free to make the motion.
Um, I'll go with my motion.
I'll second.
You know, there might not be any comments, but I hear it's blowing up, uh, you know, Twitter and Instagram.
Yeah.
That's what they're howling for.
Exactly, I heard my name was announced and they started howling, so. Uh, okay, so, uh, let's take roll call.
Hey, Commissioner Davidson?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Lockren?
Aye.
Commissioner Luba Mersky?
Aye.
Commissioner Samuzi?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Mercado?
Yes. Okey-dokey. We don't have an appeal for that, I presume, under our rules and procedures?
I think we have an appeal.
I'll hold that in my back pocket in case.
Okay.
Uh, okay, well, excited to take that on next year, and hopefully, we'll be back, uh, in person sometime soon. So now, it looks like a director's report, if we have anything, please.
Hi, I have a few things I wanna share, um, there's been, um, as you can see, we've been, um, all working remotely and trying to, within the past few weeks, have been trying to figure out how to continue our service to the public. Um, and there's been a lot of activity happening in the background. Um, uh, we are now, um, accepting electronic filing of applications in both the building and planning department. Um, we've been working on creating, um, electronic plan reviews, so that's coming soon, um, as well as virtual inspections. And, um, so we're really looking at trying to, you know, kind of, we're gaining momentum, we're trying to continue our, our, our service to the public. And, um, there's been a lot of, of work on that, and construction work, um, has been modified in the past week or so um, by order of the, uh, governor. And so now, we are looking at, um, allowing, continuing to allow construction work for housing projects that contain affordable housing units. that contain affordable housing units and projects that are, um, that contribute to essential services. Um, projects that are not essential or not, are non-housing projects will not be allowed to continue um, construction and inspections will be limited to, I'm just securing the site to make sure it's safe and um, not a hazard. So um, the building department has been working with the police department to create a line for um, work that continues that are, that don't meet the criteria that I just mentioned. Um, and there has been a direct line that has been created so that, to facilitate that. It's called the building assistant telephone, um, also known as the bat phone. Um, just thought I'd throw that in. Um, staff is working remotely as well. Um, we've been meeting with applicants remotely, um, with uh, our staff. We're hellholding staff meetings remotely. Um, we're uh, uh, offering conference call to, conference calls to facilitate meetings with applicants. And we've even shared um, uh, plans remotely to kind of facilitate a discussion that would be, that would simulate um, our counter discussions and facilitate uh, successful submissions of applications in the future. Um, city council meetings and planning commission meetings are being held remotely. And this is allowing us to continue to provide the service that um, we really strike for with the city. And so I just wanted to um, let you, um, the planning commission, um, and Chair um, Mercado know that we are um, continuing to, to provide that service and um, and let the public know that there, we're still open and we're still processing applications. And it's just a little bit different and an adjustment is, is taking place, but we're still here. And that's it.
Great, thank you. And I'll ask if any planning commissioners have any communications or announcements they want to make?
I, I would just say thank you to the staff, um, of really the whole city staff. And in this case, particularly the planning staff for everything. I know you've had to adapt extremely rapidly on the fly. And it sounds like you've done a tremendous amount to continue to serve the public despite um, shelter in place. So thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to take a minute to publicly thank our fellow Commissioner, ex Commissioner Jeff for his uh, service in this um, commission. And uh, we miss him and we hope he's doing okay and everything is um, going well for him. Looking forward to seeing him someday soon. And uh, thank you, Jeff.
Agreed. I'll second all both. Anyone else?
Yeah, just have one thought. This is kind of a continuation and let me know if this is not the appropriate form for this. This is kind of a continuation of the objective standards conversation that we had. And uh, I believe it was the last in-person uh, commission meeting we had um, with the, the Homeward Bound building. Um, and so at least I've been, I've been kind of doing some research into the city code. I'm going to send you some, some thoughts that I have. But um, I, I guess where I'm sort of unclear is what is the scope of, of recommendations from our end? So for example, there are some that I think, you know, we can directly leverage the, the city code for. There are some others that it might be in the form of recommendations to city council for maybe changes to, to the civil code or um, you know, maybe other venues of, of making some more what we'd make call legislative changes. Um, do you have any recommendations on, on how to uh, present that or frame that?
Yeah, I mean, so um, two things. First, our city code is in place and it's published and it's already applicable to development proposals. So um, the majority of what we have in there is already, like, there's no need to, to bring that forward into objective standards, although we may, just for clarity, provide a, a list of those standards that apply by reference. Um, the objective standards, the, the thought with the objective standards is that we are wanting to make it clear um, from a design standpoint, what elements are important to us um, as a city in terms of new, well, new uh, residential projects um, that meet the criteria for, or eligibility for um, for moving forward a by right project. Um, and so, you know, kind of, we'll merge the two. And when we come back and present these to you, we'll merge the two, the, the requirements that are already in place and already published and don't need, don't need to be modified. The objective standards, which are design focused and um, will require um, adoption. Um, and then separately, during that process, you can also um, include other other elements that you feel are important for us to look at. Um, I don't, I think there may be, what we had talked about before is doing some sort of a study type session where we allow that opportunity for that initial discussion. And, and it might be um, either design review board and planning commission separately or, or merging of the, of the two um, groups to provide kind of a, you know, a really good, solid conversation about what those, what the need is and where this, you know, what standards besides the design elements, what other standards need to be brought forward. So um, yeah, I mean, I, I would be interested in hearing what you have to say. I um, um, and yeah, and then in terms of, you know, if you have some ideas tonight on how that might look, that would be okay to share as well. Um, in terms of giving specific feedback, I think, I think that would have to be noticed to be able to give specific feedback tonight. Um, um, but, but in terms of, you know, how that, the format of the meetings, whether merging the two sounds like something that would be um, a better, a better format. Um, or whether having the two meetings separately, um, yeah, I'm interested in hearing what you think, what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, so m- most of my, uh, most of my feedback, if you recall from last time, was, was less about the, the design components. And it was more, so less about, let's say, the architectural design components, which I think is really what the objective standards are, are currently focused on. And I was thinking more about sort of like, I don't know what you call it, maybe like the, the structural design, where I'm thinking about sort of what is the impact on um, on infrastructure? And I know that E I Rs, you know, that's supposed to be that. And so the by right process is supposed to bypass that. But the, the intent behind my thought was that what we don't want to do is put ourselves in a situation where um, you know, we have developers basically spamming by rights projects to bypass the environmental review. And then we have a bunch of infrastructural issues because we have allowed, you know, this much building in these particular areas that can't really support the, the volume or the types of housing that are being put in. So that's where, you know, I was trying to look at this, the civil code, because you had indicated that like the objective standards have to come from um, some pre-compiled uh, governing body, i.e. city code, as opposed to just like made up. So that's where I was looking at the city code to see like what um, guidance there is around sort of requirements from an infrastructure, structure perspective. There are some, but I think in terms of the, the intent or the, the thought process that I have, I think there's probably some things outside of that that we would, we would likely need to, to put in place. And that's where um, that's where I'm kind of unsure as to um, you know, how I can or should present that. But I do think that I, I don't necessarily know how productive it might would be to have both us and you in a single session if we're talking about the non uh, architectural design related items. They may have insights, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think you bring up a good point. I think what um, some of the things that I'm thinking about right now, like streets, street sizes, um, street standards, I guess, um, you know, drainage improvements, all of those are still required of applicants. Um, the standards are not necessarily in the code themselves, but, but the requirement is there. And so you do bring up a good point about, you, you know, just kind of making sure that we are clear in, in, in our, in writing of our, of our standards, our objective standards, that we are maybe more clear about how that, you know, how the, what, what specifically we're, we're asking applicants to apply. Um, um, yeah, I mean, we'll be working with uh, Public Works and the Sanitary District and other other departments to make sure that we're looking at um, design elements that also are compliant with their requirements.
And one other question is, uh, do we have the ability to require certain things of by right developments? So for example, um, with the, with the, the wiring for, for, was it level two um, EV charging? Right, is that something that we could say that any, any by rights um, development over a certain number of units, you know, needs to have sort of this type of infrastructure in place within, within this in order to get approval?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, I'll have to double check, but I think that if you, if we have a specific, like we um, lay it out specifically, like if there are five parking spaces and that's, the six will have to be, you know, electric vehicle. Like if we're that specific about what that metric is, then we would be able to.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll compile my thoughts, I'll send them to you first. And then we can just kind of get guidance from there in terms of like, what forums would be, would be best in terms of sort of disseminating, socializing or discussing those items?
Okay. Great.
Awesome. Thank you, great.
I wanted to real quick just thank Lindsay and Rafi and, and Tom and the whole staff. This is, this has gone better than most of my classes have gone. So um, yeah, yeah, I know it's, it's the first time for all of us, but, but it's um, it's good. We're still getting on with the city's business and, and thank all you guys and that's it.
Yeah, much agreed. Thank you to everyone who's been supporting it. Anyone else, last comments as we get? No? Okay. So I think, uh, is our next meeting April twenty eighth? Is that still?
Our meeting is, I believe, um, we're looking at May, I don't think.
That's on May.
April twenty eighth.
Yeah, your regular scheduled meeting is the twenty eighth, but we have no agenda items. So it'll be the twelfth.
The twelfth, yeah.
Okay. Great. All right, we'll see that there's no, nothing else. I will adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-nine.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.